Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That passes eight to zero. Okay, is there a motion to instruct the town attorneys to do, uh, to instruct the town attorneys to do as was suggested in executive session?
Yes, first.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Question to the town, questions to the town attorney? Does anybody have questions for the town attorney?
Yes, I do, I'm sorry.
Mr. Kadim?
Fell asleep on my feet. Question I have. Who has the, um, Center School, who has the okay or the right to do, you know, to tear the school down or keep the school open? Who has that right? The mayor, or the council, or?
Well, in terms of using it as a school property, my understanding is the Board of Ed would have to approve taking the school back. In terms of the future development, any ideas to develop, or any proposals to develop the property, can be brought to the council for approval.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear, because I, we all knew at this, I want to make sure I know, so when the constituents ask me, I can say, "Okay, it's the Board of Ed, you said, and then it's the town council, correct? For building or tearing down."
Well, the Board of Ed, with respect to whether this school would, whether that property would be used for school purposes, would be up to the Board of Ed.
Yeah, because the Board of Ed's been using it. And like I said, my son went there a couple of times, you know, for whatever reason, but the building is being used, so that's why I'm saying, some, who makes that final decision, or the decision?
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Hodgson.
Yeah, Board of Ed would decide whether it'd be used as a school, and they've given it back and said they don't want it.
Okay.
So, that's what happened.
Okay, thank you.
But who tears it down? That's what I'm saying.
Now, I, I think the question is, if there was going to be a demolition of it, if the council wanted to prevent and assure that there is no demolition of it in the near future, does it, should the council pass a motion to do so?
Yes, it would come to the town council.
Should, but that's not the question. The question was, if we want to assure that there's nothing done that's on the path to demolition, do we need to pass a motion to make sure that that's done?
We do a resolution.
We should pass a resolution. Is there a resolution?
Yes, a resolution that we do not tear down the Center.
Do not do anything that would be on the path to demolition?
Yes, do anything that would not be on the path to demolition.
Madam Chair, I believe you need to amend the agenda to add the resolution, don't you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'd like to amend, is there a motion to amend the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, I'd like to comment on this when you, when you.
Okay, is there a motion now to?
This motion now is to recommend that the, that the building does not get tore down during the demo, I mean, during, during the testing of the demolition, make sure that we guarantee that the building never gets tore down.
That the, okay, that there's?
Help me word it now, we together on this, talk to me.
Yeah, that, 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 nothing happens, that, so it's not on the path to demolition, meaning no damage from?
Nothing happens, so, so it doesn't move to the path of demolition, through the path of demolition.
Okay, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to give you some history on this, the, I believe the, the school was decertified as an elementary school back in 2005. I had talked to Tom Malloy, who was then Chairman of the Board of Education, and said there was no reason they needed it as a school. It was a town building that the Board of Ed has decided they no longer need. The concern I have here is that you don't know what you want to do, the Board of Ed doesn't need it, you have a building right now that's vacant, and whether you, I mean, you're saying you want to have, keep it as a school, and the Board of Ed is saying they don't need it. If there's something that needs to be done, is the environmental testing, you're jeopardizing the grant right now of 1.2 million dollars by putting stipulations in that the grant was approved. My advice is to at least do the due diligence to find out what's in the building, find out what the cost is for renovation, demolition, in other words, put all the cards on the table for you to make a decision right now where you're jeopardizing the 1.2 million dollars, and, and figure out your plan of action. Right now, you're saying you don't want to take down Center School. The intent was to keep the old Center School building, perhaps use it as senior housing, and then do the other development behind it, to help reinvigorate Schafford Center, to have people live there, work there, visit the restaurants, you know, create a larger commercial area. If, if that's not what this body wants to do, or the town wants to do, you know, come up with an alternative plan, but right now, you're saying you want to keep a school, fix it, for something the Board of Ed doesn't need. We just approved the budget right now, we have, we have constraints right now, the Board of Ed did get an increase. I don't know what the cost is to maintain that school, to keep it open. I don't know if the coun, the council has no say in what the Board of Ed does, first of all, and I think you know that, as far as their planning, how many kids per classroom, that's down the street. They make the recommendations, and they'll put the request in. They're, they just voted on not, they don't need the building anymore. And what you're saying is, save it. My question is, for what? You know, we, we own it, we have to maintain it, you know, you don't want it to be blighted longer, the last thing you want to have is a vacant building sitting there for a long time, because it, it could be problematic. We had that with Burdsey School years ago, and it was boarded up, it was something that wanted to be improved, we just didn't know what it was going to be. At that point, they were talking about housing, and then we made it like an annex, which is fine, it works out great, but I would just do the due diligence first, do the environmental, find out what's there, put your options on the table, we're making an educated decision as far as what the future is of that building, before coming up with a resolution, saying, "Don't tear it down," that's fine, but find, find it out first, because you may, you may want to, if there's bad things in that building, and you just lost funding for that, so in other words, don't put yourselves in a corner, do the due diligence first, and then if you want to do a resolution later, so be it, but that's my advice.
Madam Chairman, I, I believe-
Okay, I'm sorry, no, I was about to-
I believe that was already passed.
I'm sorry?
I believe that his suggestion has already been passed, to do the due dil, due diligence.
We, we have, we have passed a study, this is, this is different.
So this is after?
In the Phase Three.
This is different. Ms. Manis, you have the floor?
So, I go to the Board of Ed liaison meetings, I've not missed one, you are not there. But you should come, it's fascinating stuff. Clarence, the, I don't know, COO of the Board of Education, when I asked him, what was the projections based on the, the performance indicators, and the data that would be coming forward regarding demographics, and plus or minus in subgroups, his comment directly on the record was, "We can always use another school. I could definitely use another school, and I could use a school right there." That was his, that was his comment. So that's their comment about using a school. They recognize the fact that it can't be a school right now, as it is. I hear you speaking, and I see how upset you're getting.
I'm not upset.
Oh, no, you are.
I'm not.
Okay, one at a time, Ms. Manis.
So here's the, so here's the thing. I am afraid, and I am going to share this with the Chair and the rest of the council, that that demolition testing, and the push for it right now from administration, is scaring me, because I think we're going to end up with a school that's got a cracked foundation, or that something goes wrong, and we can't do anything. I'm sorry, I don't trust it. I think you want it too bad, and when somebody wants something real bad, chances are, there's a reason. So the fact that we passed the testing, and the fact that you don't want what Mr. Kadim is asking, is all the more reason to pass it right now, because if anything goes wrong in that building, and it has to, and then we're stuck, just like the educational facility, it's gotta come down. We have no choice. We have to do something. We owe it to the people. This is Broadbridge Avenue all over again. People don't want this, so it's either got to be a group buy-in, or it's got to be something else. I get what you're trying to do, it's, it's noble, you're trying to make things happen, but it can't happen without the neighborhood, and the neighborhood's not with you right now, like at all, and they don't have representation.
Listen, that's, that's fine, but if you, if you jeopardize the grant, and you lose the money, then you still have the vacant building, it needs to remediate it, and regardless of what use you do, and I'm not upset, I've actually taken steps back from this, and I let the RDA do it, and, you know, I, it is what it is at this point, so if it doesn't happen, then what? What's your plan? And so if it's going to be a school, and you have to remediate, there's going to be costs associated with it, you have to staff it, you're looking at more costs, was there ever a cost estimate given as far as, well, we don't know what the remediation will be totally, but for renovations, and also to staff that? You're looking at a significant increase next year, or the year after, from the Board of Education. We've made significant investments in our schools right now, whether it's the Soto School, or Schafford High School. Five years ago, I sat here, and the Board of Ed had a committee, and they were looking to close the school. You remember that? Wilcox and Nichols, Franklin, Lordship School? Five years ago. Now they're talking about, "We need more space," well, they reduced their class size. That's one of the reasons why they had some issues with space, but the question is, is that the best location for a school? What's the cost? And that's a decision the Board of Ed has to make, not, not this body. I think what's happening is, you know, you're saying they need it, but no, no one knows what the cost is to the taxpayer. All I'm saying is, do the testing, then figure it out, but, you know, you said, "I was, I'm not upset, I'm actually very calm about this, because I'm rational. I, I don't have an emotional response to this, you know, we're, we're trying to help reinvigorate Schafford Center, if the town doesn't want it, the council doesn't want it, so be it." You know, we'll, we'll move on and do something else, but we still have issues regarding parking at the train station, we still have merchants down there, which we like to see do a little bit better, and offer some options to folks, people downtown. But again, it's up to this body in, in the end, but I would just say, slow down a little bit, do the testing, figure out what the costs are, what's in the building, we know there's lead, we know there's asbestos, we know there's PCBs. To the extent, we don't know yet, we know there's some of them. Can it be remediated? Let's find out, that's all I'm asking, but it's up to you.
And then, Mr. Chase?
Yeah, quick question. If this resolution were to pass, would we lose the money to do Phase Three, which is to find out exactly what the, what the problem is in terms of hazardous substances in the building?
I think that question should be asked from the State of Connecticut, I, to find out. I, I'm not prepared to answer it either way, but I would ask the state that question.
More discussion, Mr. Kadim?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. In terms of the school, the fact that we're using so many porta, portable rooms, and we're building encasement for these portable rooms, apparently, we need more space, so however it has to be done, I believe that it should be, this motion that's, that's set before, should go through, period, and then we'll deal with that either, because those, those apartments that's going, of those condos that are going up on Main Street, 40-plus condos, where those kids going to go? What school they going to go to? We don't know anything yet, so you know, we have to think about our future, we got to keep that building in general, because we're going to need it, and to tear it down and, and do other projects, that's, that's a good idea, for, like, like you said, if that's something that the town needs, but the town needs educ, buildings to educate the children that are coming here, children are being born every day, we're getting overloaded, so many condos being built all over the place, where they going to go to school at? We already are renting these, these, these building, I mean, these portable classrooms that are in bad shape also, that was something else brought to light, that they need some repairs to some of those buildings.
We're not prepared to make that, that answer, it's the Board of Ed that we're looking for guidance and suggestions from, as far as planning. That's the way it's always worked historically in this town, it's a separate elected body, they know the needs of what the children need, or what their staffing levels would be, I, you know, or, it changes from year to year, they have projections, but again, it's, it's, that's something that has to come from them, I, this-
Well, it's important, it's important to accept what we, what we're dealing with right now, and the fact is that we do have overcrowding, and we do need to keep that school open, and if the testing, you do the testing, the $2 million, from what we've seen in this budget, you know, we can afford to cut some things to get back $2 million, so, I mean, I'm not going to cry over $2 million from the government, when, when, when we, it's a whole nother apples to oranges, but I'm, I mean, apples to, you know what I mean, so we have to make sure that we keep the town in the mindset, right, of a community. Like, if you keep throwing all these, like, behind my house, there's a company back there moving around big metal carts all the time, waking me up, I mean, it's, the quality of life is garbage, you know, I wouldn't sell my house to someone, I wouldn't put them through that, so I'm saying, if you're going to do the same thing to these people over there by Center School, that's a bad thing, so we, we need to leave the school there, test it if need be, and repair it if need be.
We kind of drifted a little bit, Councilman Chase brought up a good question about the money received from the state. If, if the money disappears in the state, then when the town's going to be on the hook for remediation costs? I, I don't, that's a good question, I don't know. All I'm saying is, wait, and I'm not emotionally driven on this, or feel it the way, I'm just saying, if, if, just wait and find out if you jeopardize it or not, that's all.
Okay, Mr. Young?
Excuse me, could somebody repeat the, the original motion?
I'm sorry, we're in discussion, Mr. Young?
Um, I remember when somebody was talking about, 1.2 million dollars has to go through the, for the first three phases of the, of the project, and the demolition. But what does that mean? Does that mean, well, if we're not going to demolish it right away, then obviously we're not going to get that money?
We need to do a Phase Three, regardless of whether we demolish it or not.
Yeah, no, but, well, part of that 1.2 was for the demolition, correct?
It was also for remediation, but I'd wait and do the remediation, and then have the discussion about whether or not, what you want to do at that point. I would ask the State of Connecticut what the criteria is, so we don't, we don't lose the money. If, if you guys don't care about the money, go ahead and do a resolution. I mean, if you want to send, send money back to the state, but we still have to do a Phase Three, and, and by the way, I don't, we don't know if the Board of Ed needs the building, and, you know, so you're, we have to maintain it, we're going to have to secure it, with wallet.
Well, number one.
We have a, a use, you know, the, the last council approved the funding, they supported what was happening, to do the testing, and come out with a plan, I mean, we're, we're still a ways off from anything happening at that site.
We already, as we talked about earlier, approved of the Phase Three, make sure that that would happen, so that it wasn't going to be not getting to the structural integrity of the building.
Right.
So this way, we do know what's there, okay? Now, the-
Speak into the mic, please.
The thing is now, is to make sure that it's not just going to all of a sudden be demolished, okay? Let's look at our options, just as you said.
Right.
Let's find out what's there.
That's, I agree.
But, you know, what Ms. Manis and others are scared of, is we're going to wake up one morning, and the bulldozers are going to be there, and it's going to be going down, and we're left.
That's not going to, that, listen, that's not going to happen, but the, the Phase Three has to happen, regardless, whether you keep it or you don't.
Or that Phase Three will be done in such a way to prepare the building for demolition?
Exactly.
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
But, but we, we have to have assurances that there's not going to be a mistake, this, like, like you said, the foundation being damaged, or anything happening, then you say, "Okay, the building got to come down now, because when we was working, we incidentally broke something, so now the whole building got to come down," so we don't want, this is the insurance, that they won't do that. This is just my overview, that you, you will do the test, yes, but you will not destroy key parts of it to where, now, okay, the building, we need an insurance that the building won't come down by accident, or on purpose, on accident, however you say.
I just don't know if your actions will jeopardize the grant or not, that's all.
Okay, Ms. Manis, and then we're going to-
I, I just want to point out that we've had multiple grants that have been reneged by the state. There's no reason why they couldn't take this one, too, tomorrow. We lost Barnum Ave, we lost Shakespeare, we lost, I don't even know, God's, God knows what. So, the issue is, is the money for brownfields always exists, it's just, it's, it's similar to EPA, you got to wait for it a long time, but it's there. People don't want this stuff in their backyard, and they find money for it, clean water fund, all of it, so I think that the, the scariness of it, we might not have money for the Barnum Ave streetscape, but what, money for brownfields is going to exist in Connecticut for quite some time.
We're actually, we're actually trying to reprogram that, that money, through the Bridgeport Regional Planning Agency, now met, met, called MetroCAG. The, um, listen, i- if, it's 1.2 million dollars the town's going to lose, and if, if that's what your feelings are, if you, if you don't want the money, somebody else will take it. But as far as getting that money, there's a significant process involved, as far as going before the state, doing presentation, which I was involved with, to get that money, we were, and a lot of towns weren't, we've received a significant amount of money from the State of Connecticut, because they know we're doing things here, we're remediating, we have needs, but again, it's, there's no guarantees in anything, but-
But what I'm not understanding is, we approved Phase Three, so we are using that money. We are using that money, so why would we not have the grant, if we are using that money?
Councilman-
Wouldn't we just be collect for that, for that portion of it?
The question's for Ms. Manis.
Councilman Chase brought up a question about, could it jeopardize the grant? And my, my response is, check with the state, that is, to make sure. I mean, if, if you don't mind jeopardizing the grant, I don't know the answer to that.
I, I just want to interject here, how much money of that grant has already been spent?
Off the top of my head, I don't know, it's for Phase One, Phase Two, so that's, it's not a lot, for those.
We can't be afraid to lose a grant, to lose the building, can't be afraid of losing-
Is this part of the grant money that was used for the coal towers as well, the brownfields?
No, this is separate, no, this is, this was a-
The different grant.
This was a separate grant application, as was contract plating, as was Mercer Fuel Tower.
Okay, so they're all separate?
Correct.
So-
We, we have to do presentations on those, in other words, there's, there's an application process, and we had to go and, before a panel, and actually talk about the benefits of why we think this is important to our community.
So what I'm most concerned about, Mr. Young said, I'm scared about the building not being there tomorrow, that's not really what I'm concerned about, what I'm most concerned about is that if we do vote for this, and we do want this, that a phone call will be made by some anonymous person, and that the grant funding will be going away, and it'll be in the newspaper two days from now, because that's the way things tend to happen here, that's politics, right? I'm learning. So I'm definitely afraid that we need to put, if we're going to do this, and we're going to say no demolition, and we want to hang on to that money, we need to make sure we make it as public as possible, so that that can't happen. There's nobody sitting here right now, sorry, there's a couple of you, but we need to make that very, very public, that we want that money to stay, I don't know if you have connections, Mr. Chase, from your time in the legislature, but we need to make sure that that money is wrangled in, and doesn't go anywhere.
Okay, Mr. Chase?
Yeah, just to respond, no, I was in legislature 20 years ago.
No, but, come on.
There's all new players.
I'm going to call the question, because we've discussed it.
Well, what is, could you repeat the motion? The motion was not clear to me.
The motion.
The mo, the motion was to, once again, guarantee that what they're doing in terms of phasing, the, the, the testing, that they do not damage the building going forward, so it still be usable, and that they do not demolish the building.
Okay, is, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
And I'm voting no, because I think you will be jeopardizing the grant money. And it's, the process was very clear, that all this was, was to do Phase Three, it wasn't destroy, as I indicated, the borings were the size of a softball, just to go in, test the various walls, test the floor, you know, you're not going to destroy the building, but now I think you have the potential of losing the entire grant, and then, if you want to do remediation and find out, then it's going to cost the town.
I have to say, it's very difficult to vote, when we have not seen the grant application, and we should have been provided the grant application.
Well, maybe it should have been tabled till we got it. Did anybody ask for it?
I've asked for it.
Who'd you ask?
So that's two to six, so what is that?
Who did you ask?
I'm not going to get into the details of that, but, uh-
Well, that's not helpful.
I know.
So we're pulling a resolution out of thin air, and voting on it with half the information in our hands. Pretty irresponsible.
I'm going to recess for a second, once you get grant application. Okay, the Chair votes yes, the motion passes six to two.
I'd like to reconsider while, oh, Mr. Kadim's motion.
You'd like to reconsider your vote?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor of allowing Ms. Antezzo to reconsider her vote, say aye.
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 All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, let me do a roll call vote on this. Oh, I'm sorry, was there a second on allowing Ms. Antezzo to reconsider her vote?
Second.
Okay, there is a second. All in, okay, let me do a roll call vote on this. Mr. Kadim?
No.
Mr. Harden?
I'll pass.
Okay, Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Antezzo?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Yes.
And the Chair votes?
The answer is pass.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Harden?
He doesn't vote. Did you vote?
No, he passed, but he votes first. And the Chair votes, uh, yes, but the motion passes, I think. Is that passes or fails? Passes five to three?
Five to three.
Okay, now for the reconsideration of the vote, Mr. Kadim?
Should be a vote.
I'm sorry, there's a, there was a motion by Mr. Kadim.
Reconsider?
No, no, no.
No, no, I'm not reconsidering, what are you talking about?
No, we're voting on the motion to avoid the demolition of Center School, to avoid anything going to the, down the pathway of demolishing Center School.
I understand, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm, yes.
I'm sorry, can you hear me?
You want for a vote, I wish you'd have your motion.
Yes.
That's correct, so you're voting on the motion.
Okay, so, my motion stands, I'm-
Point of clar- Can you vote? Yes, yea or nay?
I'm voting yes, that we, we make sure it don't get demolished, yes, no.
And Mr. Harden?
Yes, I'm voting yes.
Yes.
Mr. Young?
This is on- Back to the same vote. We're back to the original motion. So we wouldn't, we wouldn't recess, table this, bring the people in to answer our questions.
There was no motion to, there was no motion to table.
We're going to have a special council meeting to have, discuss this, if I vote yes, correct? Is that right?
That's not what the motion now is. There, nobody had made a motion to table. So we're redoing, we might have to go, we're redoing the previous vote.
Okay, then, so we have to-
No.
Can we reconsider again?
Yeah, we can reconsider again. Can be here all night doing the same thing.
Mm-hmm, I think you can only do it twice.
Maybe you're right.
Voting, now, we're voting on the backing, we're voting first, but now we're shifting our votes, delay it, have a special meeting on, on that.
Mr. Leclerc, attorney.
Leclair.
Leclair, sorry. Sorry, I read it like it's written. Um, question, if, point of clarification, if this does not pass, can a new motion come forward?
So, just give him a second.
If the motion does not pass, can you make a new motion?
Yes.
Please stop.
Okay.
If your question's whether the-
Right, but right now, we're at a two yes, Mr. Young doesn't know what he's doing yet.
No, we're, no, we're at one-
Two yeses.
We didn't, we didn't move to the-
You voted yes, you voted yes, and we got to Mr. Young. If the motion fails, right, follow me, we can make a brand new motion, and then we can do what you want to do, which is to table it.
Yeah, right.
So-
So I'm voting no.
Stack the deck, guys.
No.
No, so I'm voting no.
I'm sorry, Mr. Young, you voted what?
No.
You voted no.
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 All right. No.
You're voting no? I'm voting yes, but the motion fails five-
Madam Chairman?
Two, three.
Five to three. Madam Chairman, I move to table for, for the purposes of having a special meeting to bring in personnel from the state, get a copy of the original, so we can get these questions answered, whether or not Phase Three means demolition of this building.
Okay.
I don't think anybody wants demolition of the building, I don't think anyone wants demolition of the building, we just want to make sure we're not losing money that we could use, if the school needs to be remediated.
I just want to point out, I don't think, and Mr. Leclerc, I don't think we're tabling anything at this point, we simply are making-
There's nothing to table.
Right, exactly.
Right, you're correct.
Yes, we're, you were just calling, we're just calling for a special meeting of public presentation on this, when we are all, when we would all be better prepared and have the state-
Why did you ask me to table this?
No, no, that was before.
Oh, that was before, okay.
Madam Chair, can I ask a point of clarification?
Yes.
Right now, this school is going to go into Phase Three, there's absolutely nothing to stop between now and July, July 14th, anything happening there. Do we, can we pass a temporary something, so that nothing can happen until that special meeting?
Perhaps one could pass that demolition does not occur before October 1st?
If I may, there was an item you passed earlier this evening, several hours ago, unanimously.
Back when we were all younger.
I, I want to say, three hours ago, three and a half, I don't know, and you unanimously passed a resolution that the recommendation of the building needs committee is accepted, and the request for proposal to study the cost to bring Center School facility back to a school, being hereby is approved. So you did take a vote on that?
Yes.
Earlier this evening?
No.
No.
No, you voted unanimously to have an RFP go out to study the cost to bring the school
With the resolution, there was an addendum that was added by Mr. Chase, which included Phase Three. It's in the notes.
True.
It's not on your paper, but it's on his, and he read it.
Would you like me to read it again?
No, the minutes will be what they are, and it's...
And I spoke into the microphone when I did it.
But that Phase Three, Mr. Chase, let me just clarify, my understanding was by Phase Three there, you simply meant the testing, not the demolition of the building.
That's all I said, study to be conducted after the completion of Phase Three.
And the concern is that there is a document that shows Phase Three to be demolition?
That, a document I'd like to see.
I thought you have it. No?
That's not...
We know that.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that no demolition take place at Center School until after such time as a special meeting has been held by members of this council to review both the grant application and ask the necessary questions that are needed to answer the questions that we have that have yet to be answered.
Okay.
No demolition will happen until after the special meeting, when we take this vote.
Can we put a date on that? October first? Should be plenty of time.
When is the special meeting going to happen?
That's, we need to plan that, but October first should be plenty of time, that no demolition should occur before October first.
I'm just thinking fiscal year for the state. It ended now, right? July, July fifteen, July first is the end of their fiscal year, so if they were going to take it, they would...
June thirtieth?
June, yeah, right, so their new fiscal year already started, so, I don't know.
Okay, is there a second to...
Until, until, we can do until... October first is a long time, do we have any idea how long it's going to take to get these documents together? Like, is this...
You can always amend your decision to extend the timeline to if you want. At least you know nothing's going to happen prior to October one.
Like, is this happening, like, I'd like to see us get this stuff, like, soon. If you want this thing, and everybody wants this thing to happen, some people want it, if we say October first, people drag their feet, so let's get it done, August first.
Madam Chairman.
That's not realistic in the summer. Yes, Mr. Chase?
I, we've already voted on this amendment, the, the motion that Ms. Manis is bringing up now, that's the original amendment that Mr. Kadim brought up. I'm going to ask the town attorneys, are we allowed to, under Roberts' rules, do this again, or do we need to wait till the next meeting?
It's a different motion. It's technically a different motion, the last motion had to do, I mean, it was actually worded that there be no, that there be a guarantee that Center School not move to the path of demolition, something to that effect. This is the difference, this is that there be no demolition until a special meeting of the town council occur to review the grant. So by this resolution, you're mandating there be a special meeting, and that there be no demolition until the special meeting.
Okay.
I, I'm not sure that you, that anyone has the power to demolish this building, I might add, in the interim, absent, the counselor, you're the ones who would vote on a demolition and would have to...
We don't need to put a date on it.
And probably an eight twenty-four review, so that's just an aside, I don't know that, you could do this if you'd like to.
No, but that's not the, that's the issue, not the issue, the issue is whether, if we do this, whether we're going to lose the grant money.
Well, that's correct, that's correct.
Madam Chair, just going to say...
I mean, if the town wants to pay to do the, because regardless, if we decide to keep this and remediate this as a school, we're going to wind up paying the, God knows how much, to do the, to determine what is exactly the hazardous material in that school, and that, and how much it's going to cost us to remediate it, and that's what Phase Three is about.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
Mr. Kadim?
Attorney, just to be clear, when you put a motion, is, is not for demolition, it was to make sure there is no demolition.
Our comment was that this building could not be demolished unless this body took affirmative action to have it demolished.
Okay, because I know...
So it's not, I don't, I guess...
I understand.
Okay.
We would agree this can't be demolished tomorrow, if you do nothing right now, just go home.
Yeah, let's go home.
No one... No, no, no one, no one...
Madam Chair, I'm not going to...
It would have to be affirmative action to have it demolished by this body.
I'm going to consciously end my motion with, until a special meeting is had regarding these topics that need to be answered, grant application, questions from council, maybe, maybe a public forum.
So what is, what is the motion, so, the record for the clerk to get it clear, because I don't know if she...
That motion, that no demolition of the building beyond Phase Three work take place, because that can start, beyond Phase Three work take place until after a special meeting of this council, that these members has been convened to take affirmative action, I like that word, I'm a Democrat. You're supposed to laugh, it's a joke.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to that motion? Yeah, there's no second. Okay, let's move on, unfinished business and/or old business, committee appoint, oh, I'm sorry, questions to mayor or staff, report from economic, director of economic development, is that what you had read?
Yes, I gave a report earlier, if you have any other questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Point of information. She made, did she make a motion?
There was no second.
No second.
There was no second?
You moved on.
Yes, so now we're on questions to mayor or staff, report from director of economic development, mayor said that, that was her report, response from planning and zoning administrator regarding property adjacent to airport, airway drive.
I didn't know what that was, I, I just saw this...
I had asked Mr. Hugansky. Okay. I just need to know if that's in zoning compliance, the...
Yes, so I checked with the P and D administrator today, it's mostly all DOT stuff, they are in compliance with DOT, and it is the construction project to complete the runway, they're using one piece of property which is owned by the airport as staging, we did have a noise issue earlier on, which has also been addressed, no construction is happening before seven o'clock, before the vehicles were idling outside the property, now they're allowing them to come in before seven o'clock, so the vehicles are idling on the airport property, affecting no neighbors whatsoever.
And it's all within zoning, it's all, there's zoning compliance?
Yes, there's actually no zoning issues here.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, committee appointments, beautification committee?
Madam Chair, I have a question for the mayor as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yes.
Regarding Vanel Fieldhouse, town property, and there was issues, you've seen the emails probably, or maybe Mark looked at them, regarding the health concerns that have come forward from one of the coaches, and another person from the, a resident, concerning young children being allowed in that building, because the building is under the town, and our, what is your plan for that building? Because right now, the Fieldhouse is on hold with RFP, and it's not getting done for fall, right?
Right, and, and, you know, the last thing you want to do is invest money in a structure that may be...
Absolutely.
So, so I think you're all aware of that. We'll have Public Works go out and take a look at it, and try to fix any issues, even on a temporary basis, just to address some of the concerns, but again, it, it, we're still waiting for an answer as far as what the products, final product's going to be, in order to move forward with the Fieldhouse. I think we all want the Fieldhouse.
Even a little, even a little jitney bus to take the kids from the locker room up at the school, down, so that they don't have to use that facility, if, if that facility is deemed unusable, unusable.
You know what, why don't they run up the hill and get some exercise?
They could, they could, but their equipment is, is pretty big expensive.
It's what they did years ago when I was in high school.
That's what the home teams do now.
Yeah, right.
Right, that's what we did.
Basically for the visiting team.
Right.
Right.
I mean, you know, there was a big deal when they built that facility years ago, a lot of parent involvement, they raised the money, but I'll have Public Works go out, take a look at it, and we'll reach out to the board of it also, to see what we can do to accommodate our term.
I just don't want to be liable if something happens...
Absolutely.
To us. And then my second question is regarding, and this is a question that was asked by a number of people, Kevin Kelly has been at the zoning hearings, representing the town. Question was, is, who, who hired him, why does the town need representation, and then where is the representation for Hamilton Street and Ferry Boulevard coming? Why that project and not their projects?
I'll defer to our town attorney on that, Chris Hodson.
I'm not sure why Mr. Kelly is there. I believe he was retained.
What is your issue?
I don't, speaking on behalf of Foster's...
I'm not sure either, that's why I'm deferring to town attorney on that.
Kevin Kelly was, was representing, he said, at the meeting, the town in the, in the proceedings with James Farm Road. Now, James Farm hasn't been approved or denied yet, it's like in process, so why would the town, Mr. Florrick was there, he's town attorney, why would Mr. Kelly be, be retained already, is question one, and then the question from...
What are you doing here?
The constituent was, when are, why wouldn't projects like Hamilton and Ferry Boulevard also get the same kind of representation? There's an issue with equity coming through, obviously, if you were between the lines, that this happened once before with Avalon, that they got an attorney, and I don't get an attorney, and why not? So I'm hoping you can clarify on the record, so that people's minds are a little bit at ease, so what's going on?
I'm not aware of the specific circumstances here, but Mr. Kelly is an assistant town attorney for the town, but if Mr. Florrick was there, there would be no reason for Mr. Kelly to be there as well, so I'm going to ask Mr. Florrick to address it.
These affordable housing petitions under eight dash thirty G are exceedingly complex, and the statute generally flips the burden of proof from what it normally is. Normally, the burden is on the applicant to sustain his or her application. Eight dash thirty G petitions flip that, so that the burden then becomes on municipality, if the municipality is going to deny the petition, they're going to only deny the petition based on certain reasons, and the burden is on the town to prove those reasons. It has become the norm, when affordable housing petitions are made under eight dash thirty G, that encompass large developments, that because the burden is on the town, someone must represent the town and marshal evidence in opposition to the evidence that's being presented by the developer. That has usually fallen on Kevin Kelly, he's been retained by the town attorney's office to represent the town's interest. I have a function at these affordable housing petitions, and that is to advise the zoning commission, not to advise, you know, the opponents to the project, or not to present evidence against the project, but to advise the zoning commission as to the issues that are raised. If a municipality does not present evidence of its own on these affordable housing petitions, those petitions are going to pass, or there's, even if they don't, at the commission level, there's no chance on an appeal. So the job of Kevin Kelly, and what he's been retained to do, is to hire experts, to listen to what the experts of the developer are saying, to review the, the reports and the data presented by the developer, and if the town's experts do not agree, then to make that position known to the commission. So there's two fundamentally different areas here.
There's lawyer, or the people themselves, right, that are, that is there?
Are we talking about the seven ninety-five?
Yeah.
Yes, Attorney Cubic represents a group of, of neighbors who have joined together in opposition.
So why wouldn't they be the ones, just like happened in AAA, and all different kinds of things around town, why wouldn't they be the ones that had to fight that? Why is it the town, why does it automatically switch to the town in an eight thirty G?
Because if, in, in, in seven ninety-five James Farm Road, you have a group of neighbors, most of the time, you don't have that. Most of the time, you may have a group of neighbors who are in opposition to something, but they don't have the wherewithal to come up with the money to retain an attorney, or the interest to do that. So in order to make sure that the playing field is leveled, and all the information necessary to make the decision comes before the zoning commission, it's become the practice that the town will retain an attorney, in this case, it's, you know, one of the assistant town attorneys, to present the evidence in opposition to the, to what the developer has presented.
So for every eight thirty G in our town, from now on, there is a town attorney that is designated, whether or not the people have representation? So there will be someone, if, if, if Hamilton Avenue goes eight thirty G, or Ferry Boulevard goes eight thirty G, there'll be a town attorney assigned to those properties too?
In all likelihood, yes, but you're going to have, in any situation, I think you're going to have to consider the magnitude of the project, and the potential for creating, you know, problems or injury. I'm not saying that if you have a five-unit apartment that's, comes under eight dash thirty G, that the town is going to retain an attorney to argue against that, but when you have more wide-ranging projects that affect neighborhoods, and, and that, that put a strain on the infrastructure and whatever, yes, I think you can pretty much be assured that there will be somebody representing the town.
Thank you. Thank you, are there any other questions?
To, to the mayor, or...
Oh, to the mayor or staff?
Yes. I had a question about a young man named Tavius Hall, he came down tonight to speak about the violence that's going on in terms of these young people and older people being killed. He had the number up to six hundred and thirteen people killed by police officers, quite naturally, thank God, it's not taking place in our town, and I want us to be a beacon of light for other towns throughout the country, and we was trying to get together a peace rally, and he was asking me to spearhead that, so we don't have to talk about this here, but I know you're available to me, if it's okay to come by and maybe get some things going, because this is, this is a beautiful town, and we want to keep it that way, and we want to make sure that we shine a light on our police officers who are doing the right thing, we want to recognize them, and try to keep the harmony and peace going. That's just the young man, he played in my league, you know, Wally Kadim Classic for years, he's too old for it now, but he, when this occurred, the other, like, the beginning of the week, last week, he called me right away, he was like in tears, you know, Mr. Kadim, you know, Mr. Wally, what could we do? And I said, well, you know, he said, I, I have a lot of friends concerned about, you know, their safety, and you want to have a peace rally, and quite naturally, I don't want to deal with anyone who's belligerent and losing their mind about emotions, it's not about yelling and screaming about how you feel, it's about recognizing a solution and coming together to heal. So I don't, I don't want, anyone who wants to come to the rally, if it ain't peacefully, don't come, because I don't support silliness, okay, so that's the first thought. I guess we feeling a lot of pain, everyone is feeling pain, but you don't have to express yourself in a negative manner to have a positive solution, so that's one thing I wanted to speak about, and like I said, I know this, can't do this now, I would like to come to your office, and I appreciate you extending yourself, always, you're a good guy, thank you. Also, the Julia Low Park, the money was moved, so I just have to just stay on top of these guys to get this done, with the electric and so forth, and then the money that was for Johnson House, for the, running electric so the kids can have the lights to do the football practice and so forth, and the baseball games, that should be no problem, I'm not sure, I'm asking.
Yeah, have you talked to the residents about the lights at the school? You have?
Mm-hmm, the lights are there, they just needed to run the wire, and the money was already put to the side.
Okay, so those are existing lights?
Yes.
Okay.
And they was donated by a stealing house.
Okay, so I'm trying to save your headache, because if there were new lights, that, that they tend to be, you know, people have concerns with them, but I'll talk to Public Works on both projects.
Okay, thank you, that, in Splash Park, we was trying to run the wire...
You said two questions, that was it, I get it.
No, 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 oh, you only get two?
I'm kidding, no.
I got tons of them, I mean, I'm, I miss you, okay, all right, I, I gotta get close to you right now.
Just want to remind Mr. Kadim, it's eleven twenty-two.
No, I didn't create eleven twenty-two, I would have liked to go home at, you know, eight oh five, we could have knocked everything out, but unfortunately...
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
We, we got so many emotions flying, and I miss all you guys, and I guess you miss me, because y'all talking just as long as I am, so...
That's not true, you talk much more than anyone else.
Thank, thank, thank you for the love, as always, Mr. Chase.
I needed to correct that.
I talk more than anyone else?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Councilman.
Good, Mr. Kadim, keep going.
But, but thank you for trying to distract me, but I'm focused, brother.
What was the question about the Splash Park?
Yes, the Splash Park, we were supposed to just get the fundamentals, like the wa, the water lines ran, and the electrical ran, even though, you know, all the money's not there to complete it, but we got to get it started.
So what are you looking at, is utility hookups?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and like I said, Julia Low has already been approved to put the platform down, and the pat canopy, and run the wi, the water, and the wires, I was speaking to Public Works... I was speaking to Public Works and Building Needs, we were working on that as well. So I just wanna let you know, thank you for everything, and we're gonna just push forward. I wanna be able to stay in touch with you, as well as those two agencies, to try to get it done expeditiously, because the money's already there, so thank God for that.
Okay, so you've got the three things I'll follow up on with.
Yes, and the Bonnell Fieldhouse, being that all the money wasn't there to do the Fieldhouse, I think it should be safely taken care of in terms of what needs to be repaired, so it can operate until they put a new one, if they decide to put a new one. But we don't want the kids in there when it's unsafe. That's something that we should definitely address. Let me just make sure I covered every base before I give it over. I have to also say thank you to you for all the years we've been doing Help the Children foundations, Wally Kadim Classic, you've always been there for us, and I just wanna say thank you publicly.
No problem, sure.
This year, we're celebrating 25 years, we're trying to put together some free programs. I hope I can come see you, and anyone you know, you can point me in that direction so they can help us, because we wanna do something free for the kids.
That's awesome.
And I really appreciate you guys, and I love you, thank you.
Once you come in, we'll talk about that also, okay?
Yes, sir.
For us doing something for your 25th anniversary.
Thank you, thank you so much, I appreciate you, and thank you very much, Madam Chair and Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I'm afraid I do have one question about the Bonnell Fieldhouse. I understand that the proposals came in, this may be for Chris Timniak, that the proposals came in a bit over the budget that we... That the Board of Ed had allocated for it, and perhaps this is simply just a Board of Ed thing, but what is the status?
So the latest update I do have is that the RFPs went out, the bids did come in higher, and now they're looking to scale back the project. They're in that phase right now. I don't wanna call it a full design, but it looks like they may be trying to break it into a Phase 1, Phase 2 situation. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Mr. Kadim?
Regarding the same question you have. I know in the past, Ms. Manis has expressed that Fieldhouse was done by the people in the town, I mean, that live in that area, and if they wanted to assist again, to make it expedited, I think this should be an open option, I'm not sure, but I would think that would be a good thing.
If I can respond to Mr. Kadim. There is a movement within the Alumni Association to offer help, and there are, you know... Luigi, I got a guy. I put that in record. But, you know, there's hope, but the issue is, is that if alumni pick up their... You know, if we all go with hammers and work for free, that's awesome. What we need to make sure of, and why we're going through Building Needs, is that if I wake up and don't wanna go in, and I call my two neighborhood kids to go down and paint for 10 bucks an hour, now I'm falling into a prevailing wage issue, right? So I've gotta make sure, like, I'm not breaking any labor laws with the people that we're using. So we wanna make sure, as the Alumni Association, we're not set up for anything. So we're gonna be working with Mr. Llewellyn, and maybe possibly breaking things into parts, we talked about at the Board of Ed liaison meeting, finding a way to use the volunteers we have for what we can do, while also being cognizant of labor laws, possibly applying for a waiver, whatever we need to do to make sure everything's on the up and up, so we're not taking away people's livelihoods in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure there's...
We're cheating the RFP process.
In other words, I would like to see it done, and if they wanna assist, that'd be great. If we don't have enough money, if any company wanna pitch in, that'll be great too, because they can put their name on the side of the building or something. Especially these new guys that got the tax break, they can definitely kick in a little something, I would think. I would if I had a tax break.
We would love to do all of that, we just wanna make sure it's legal and with our legislature people, that they get us the proper waivers, so that we don't hit any issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Let's move on to, if there are no more questions, let's move on to unfinished business and/or old business, committee appointments, beautification.
Can I pose a motion that we take it out of order? Because this is a guy that's been here since the beginning, Mr. Paul.
Can we just get through this quickly?
I'm saying, he's on here way after the fact, like, he's way in page... He's way down there, 9 point... For the appointment, he's been coming, he's been patient for a long time now. For zoning, where Ms. Emma Brooks had stepped down, and he put his paperwork in. I sat one of these, you know, his breakdown of his history, he's a fireman from...
You're moving to modify the agenda, is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of modifying the agenda? All opposed?
No.
Well, thank you.
No, it did not pass.
For what item?
Everybody said yes except for one person.
I'm sorry, no, let me do that again, all in favor? I only heard one yes.
I think you need to have the record, what you're modifying it for, what item is it, Mr. Kadim?
This is non-point, taken out of order for 9.1.9, which is the zoning commission alternative member.
Thank you.
Appointed, thank you for three years, and Ms. Emma Brooks has stepped down.
You want to move 9.1.9?
Excuse me, that's not the accurate one.
No, it's 9.1.5.
Thank you, I'm on the wrong page.
I'm sorry, which one is it?
It's 9.1.5.
Point 5, okay.
Thank you, yeah, thank you. 9.1.5, Board of Zoning Appeals Regular Member. And that's on page 9.
You want to move 9.1.5 up, is there a second for that?
A second did it already.
Okay, there's a second, all in favor of modifying the agenda?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
I vote no. The motion passes to two. Okay, so 9.1.5, BZA?
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Paul Traveris to the... That Paul Traveris of...
Madam Chairman, one second, to suspend the rules, you need a vote, an affirmative vote of seven council members.
Okay, the motion failed. Let's go to...
Madam Chairman, motion to adjourn? Second.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Hold on.
Discussion, Mr. Timnia?
Shitsumai's been here waiting to do item number...
Yeah, there's a lot of people here. He's been here for hours.
We can get through this quickly.
We just need to buzz through this.
I withdraw the motion.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're getting it.
All right.
Okay, beautification committee, is there any nomination?
Motion to table.
Okay, second?
Aye, second.
Okay, all in favor of tabling?
It's already on the table.
I don't see that it's already on the table.
It's not on the table, tabled items are 7.2, right?
Yep, we're 7.1.1. All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion is tabled, 8 to 0. Okay, request to EMS Funding Committee?
Page 5.
7.2.1, we're on page 5.
If on page 5, any item that is a tabled item will remain on the table unless and until it's removed from the table, you need not take any action to continue these to be tabled.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there a motion to remove this from the table, please?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that motion? There's a second, okay, all in favor of removing this from the table?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes 8 to 0.
Wait a minute, did you vote, Mr. Pardon?
No, you only removed it from the table, now you have... Now it's off the table for action.
Okay.
I didn't wanna remove it off the table, because I don't have the documentation that supports this.
But you made the motion to make it off the table.
It is off the table now.
It's off the table.
You can put it back on the table if you want.
I'd like to... I'd like to make a motion to put this back on the table, please.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of putting it back on the table?
Aye.
All opposed, this passes 8 to 0. The next one, the resolution authorizing the transfer of Arirang's real estate tax accounts to the tax suspense account pending further action. This is one that Shitsumai needs?
Shitsumai's here to...
Okay.
There needs to be a motion to take it off the table.
Okay, is there a motion to take this off the table?
Motion to take it off the table.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the motion passes 8 to 0. Shitsumai, is there...
You need a motion to...
Okay, we have a motion, is there a motion to authorize a transfer of Arirang's real estate tax accounts to the tax suspense account pending further action?
Motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion. I'm sorry, discussion. Okay, Shitsumai, do you wanna explain this?
Yes, these are...
Oh, wait, it just passed?
It did pass.
Okay, all in favor?
Motion to reconsider, how about that?
No, no, no.
Wait, 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 wait.
I'm sorry.
You have someone here, you asked any discussion, no one said anything. You can either inquire of the department's representative if she has anything, or just go straight to a vote.
Can you tell us what you have to say, please?
Oh, no, I'm just here if you had any questions regarding this resolution.
No questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, motion passes 8 to 0. 7.3.2, transfer of funds. I'm sorry?
That remains on the table unless removed. 7.3.2.
7.3.1, is it...
So if there's no motion to take off the table, that nothing happens, you may go on.
I'm sorry, we just did 7.3.1, right? And now we're at 7.3.2, transfer of funds. And tabled resolutions. Is this, was this tabled?
It was tabled at the last meeting.
It's on the table and will remain on the table unless and until someone moves it.
Okay, is there a motion to take this off the table?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Manis?
This particular interdepartmental transfers regarding the Visiting Nurse Association, we've discussed it, there's more information, I believe, that has to be collected. Am I wrong? I spoke with Mr. Chase about this earlier, is there more information that we need regarding this to make sure that we get these and other organizations that we were planning to support?
I have an answer for that.
I'm sorry, Ms...
I thought...
I'm sorry, Ms. Manis, you had a question for Mr. Chase?
Through the chair, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Chase?
I'm not sure.
The issue at hand with the visiting nurse is this. The council did not fund the 53,000 they originally asked for in our budget. The points to be made are that the Visiting Nurse Association of Stratford also services nine other communities. The question that's raised is, are these nine other communities contributing also to the Stratford VNA if they're part of our service area? And if not, why are we the only ones? The second issue at hand is the high salaries that are paid for the three top executives, which are in excess of $700,000 for three individuals. And finally, we have the issue of... Bear with me, I'm having a braingram. Oh, I'm sorry. In their fiscal year 2014, they had excess revenues come in, you can't call it a profit, it's a nonprofit, of almost a quarter of a million dollars. That's about $230,000 to $250,000. Based on that alone, why are we subsidizing this organization when no other towns are doing this? The second... So that's all I have to say as far as where I'm coming from on the VNA.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, discussion on this, Ms. Antezo?
I'd like to answer some of those points. A woman named Leah, I don't remember her last name, who is the nurse who attends to the elderly in town, explained that the other towns, instead of sending a nurse out to the home, the person involved would have to go to the emergency hospital, which gave me a thought, because if somebody can't afford a care, and they called EMS, then the town is gonna pick up the cost for the EMS run. However, as far as one figure, I also looked at the tax reports. It's not three people, it is six individuals. I still think their pay is high, but the $53,000 that we put in directly goes to attending those elderly people.
Madam Chair. Ms. Antezo still has the floor, were you done? Are you done?
Yes.
Okay, is there anybody else who'd like to speak to this issue, Mr. Harden?
Miss, in regards to EMS, insurance is a lot, a certain amount of money to cover ambulance rides. So if the individual has an insurance, the town would not eat the whole cost of the ambulance transport. It will probably eat a small portion of it. So each insurance company, for example, allow, you know, $1,200 every two months for an ambulance transport. Based on the services that they're provided by, whether it be paramedic or basic transport, will determine, you know, what the cost would be.
Well, I was talking about somebody had no coverage.
Ms. Pardon has the floor.
No coverage. No insurance, or their insurance had run out.
Okay, Mr. Kadim?
I'll yield, and I'll wait till Ms. Manis go first. Go ahead, Ms. Manis.
No, you recognize Mr. Kadim?
Thank you very much. I was like a ladies first thing, don't worry about it. Upbringing. In terms of, when you look at the breakdown, if it's $53,000, based upon how many people, our senior citizens are here who don't have no insurance or very little insurance, $53,000 is not a large thing. I don't know, you know, like you broke down the salaries, yes. $53,000 is not paying $700,000 worth of salary. But we are, $53,000 can't, the numbers don't add up. So anyway, don't make a face like that, that don't add up. But the fact that we wanna service our community and the people that are suffering, we need to do something about that. We can't not have our senior citizens suffering. We gotta have some help, and if that's what it costs, that's what it costs.
Ms. Manis? Ms. Manis?
Hi. I'm gonna, I know, you're getting some bees in your bonnet, right? I love you, Mr. Chase. I wanna point out that there are quite a number of town employees, as well as residents that are on the board for the VNA. So it's a big issue, and it's a big thing. The structural organization of the VNA is not my concern, the nonprofit and the tax exemption. The thing that concerns me the most is a nonprofit organization basically saying, "We're not going to charitably serve these people unless we have this money in our coffers to do it," because that's their right, right? So they're using this money specifically to minister to these people. So that's my only concern, regardless, and I hear the arguments with EMS and all, but if the money's gone, they're saying tough. And that happens across the board in nonprofits in lots of places, and that's just a factor of the recession and things being cut. So, you know, each person's gonna make their own decision, but to me, it's not like they can give a... They're not gonna give a decrease in salary to those top three people in order to keep servicing our people. They're just not gonna do it. So our people are gonna suffer. So we have to make a decision if we wanna see that service go away, or if we wanna see it continue. And that's a personal decision, and I think that that needs to be clear.
Okay, Mr. Chase?
Yeah, no one's talking about, you know, asking them to take the salary cut, but certainly, they could take $53,000 or whatever the amount they're looking for from the, let's call it what it is, the profit they make.
You're right.
So why are we funding them when they're making money? And why are nine other towns not doing the same thing?
Ms. Manis?
Through the chair, there are a number of Stratford residents on this board. You were once on the board from the VNA, correct?
Right, and when I was on the board, we weren't asking money from the town.
So here's my question, is why is it, why is it we're stuck in this conundrum? There should be, I feel there should be an upswell of people that are on that board, going to that board saying, "This can't go away." Regardless of what the town does, that should be gravy. You fight for your people, you're on the board. I'm on lots of boards, right? And we fight for our thing. So, you know, whether it's YMCA or this or that, I'm gonna fight for the people that, you know, that's my board, and if I'm from my town, I just don't understand why there's... I'm not hearing from all these people that are on the board, that are town residents, that are pushing on this organization to give this money. Because if the money goes away, you fill in the blanks, you're right. The revenue fills in the blank, and that's not happening, and I don't understand why. That's just my personal rant.
That's a good point, I would agree. Madam Chairman, I have another question, though, to the town attorney. This whole thing is predicated on us transferring money from the WPCA to cover general fund expenses.
No, it's not.
It says reinstated, it didn't say from WPCA.
Where is it coming? It's the bill...
We had, we had, we had allocated two hundred thousand dollars in expenditures to WPCA. So those expenditures are not happening.
It's the town budget, so it's town budget to town budget.
So it's a, so it's a, it's, but that much surplus is not, yeah. Okay. I'm going to call the question, okay? All in favor of this transfer, say? Okay, roll call. All in favor of this transfer, Mr. Kadim?
Aye.
Mr. Harden?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
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 And the chair votes no, because Medicare covers a hundred percent of their costs.
No.
Of the patients, yes, it does. You go on their website, it says a hundred percent.
Seven.
Okay, so it, motion fails, correct?
Right, yeah.
Okay, resolution, okay. Tabled appointment, Stratford Housing Partnership?
Motion passed.
Motion failed, you need seven votes.
We need seven for transfer.
Stratford Housing Partnership, is that any interest taking that off the table?
No action.
No action. Secorsky Memorial Airport Noise Abatement Committee, no action unless I hear otherwise. Ethics Commission, no action unless I hear otherwise. Disability Review Board, no action unless I hear otherwise. Ordinances and Resolution?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Resolve the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Tyler Technologies Inc. for application for service provider commencing July one, two thousand and sixteen, and expiring on June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of two hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars, and the term will renew for an additional one year at the current fees.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Is this sponsored by the whole town council? Who's sponsoring this?
This would be the, I don't know. It came from the mayor's office, I believe.
Shitsumae's here to speak on it and go into exactly what it is. It's our financial accounting system. Go ahead.
MUNIS?
Yes.
It's the MUNI.
It's the MUNIS, the board.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Appointments Library Board?
Madam Chairman, resolve that Michael Aloy of Stratford B. and hereby appointed a member of the library board to replace James Connor, who resigned and terms ends on December thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a special request to suspend the rules.
Oh, we're almost done.
To make a presentation of a resolution.
I'm sorry?
To, you want me to spell out the resolution?
Yes.
To restore thirty-five thousand dollars to senior services account, and that would be money transferred from the excess that is in the unspent sewer fee.
Second.
Twenty-five thousand, you said?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five was taken out, so I'm putting...
Twenty-five was.
Pardon?
Twenty-five was.
I believe in the budget, it was thirty-five.
Twenty-five.
Madam Chairman, if I may, as you know, under section six point two point five of the charter of the town of Stratford, at any meeting, but only after at least one week's public notice, the council, by affirmative vote of seven, may authorize the transfer of unused balances appropriated for one purpose to another.
Yes, I know it would have to be posted, posted. We really wouldn't...
Yes, it would have to be posted. It has not been posted.
Correct. But if we accept the motion, and it gets on the agenda...
We can put it on the next month's agenda.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, we can vote to send it to the side, to the side post. Okay, all in favor of sending that to the side post?
Yes.
Oh, first we have to suspend the rules to allow for that motion. Is there a motion to suspend the rules?
Motion to suspend the rules.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This motion to send this to, to the side post, to post twenty-five, transfer twenty-five thousand dollars to the side post?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
There's a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Passes eight to zero, so we will be posting that. Thank you very much, Ms. Antezo. Okay, beautification committee, is there any action on this?
No.
No action. Arts Commission, alternate member?
Madam Chairman, resolve that Councilor D. Chisenzo be and hereby appointed as an alternate member of the Arts Commission, vacating the term for Paul Gennario.
Second.
Okay, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay, Board of Assessment Appeals?
No action.
The motion passes eight to zero. Board of Assessment Appeals?
No action.
Motion to table?
It's already on the table.
No, these are new appointments.
Oh, right.
Is there a motion to table?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes eight to zero to table. Board of Zoning Appeals, regular member?
Resolve that, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, no.
Resolve that, as a, be hereby appointed, Paul, Paul, I'm sorry, I get stuck sometimes, Paul Tavoris, is to be hereby appointed as a regular member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, representing Planning Districts Two, Council District Three and Four. Terms of office, Emma Brooks resigned and expires January first, two thousand, twenty eighteen.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
See, I told you we'd get to it.
I love you, brother. You already know that.
Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission, this does not require the council vote, but I am reappointing Ron Hoydic be and is hereby appointed a member of the Inland Wetlands and Watercourses Commission. Thank you. Waterfront and Harbor Management Commission, regular member?
Member, Madam Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Just item A, excuse me, item B, resolve that Ronald Hoydic...
No, I'm sorry, we, I just did that.
You made the motion?
I didn't need a motion for that. That's a chairman's appointment.
Oh, excuse me, okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Before we move on to the next one, I just want to put on record, with everything happening on James Farm Road, the appointments to Inland Wetlands are getting kind of important. I hope that they're being talked about with District Eight and Nine, because it's scary to me to think that people are being appointed to that commission who don't know what's going on up there.
That, I can assure you that appointment was done thoughtfully. The other two have not been appointed yet. Okay? If you have suggestions?
Do you know Mr. Blake?
What?
Do you know Dennis Blake?
No.
Okay.
I don't, and I live on the inland wetlands.
Okay, waterfront, and let's finish this. Waterfront and Harbor Management Commission?
Uh, yeah, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Resolve that Thomas Lawrenson of Stratford B. and hereby appointed a regular member of the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission to replace the term of Frank Sterna, whose term expired May thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen.
Okay, all in favor?
Second.
I'm sorry, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Yeah, discussion.
Of discussion?
May I ask, is that, is that the gentleman that was removed, that was the vice chair?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Right, we're now putting him back on.
Awesome.
Okay, Madam Chairman, for alternate members?
We didn't to vote.
We did.
I don't think...
We did?
Did we? Okay, all in favor of appointing Thomas Lawrenson to waterfront?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes eight to zero. Nine point one point seven point two, alternate members for that commission?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, we're going to recommend that we reappoint Henry Halverson of Stratford as an alternate member of the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission, whose term expired May thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen.
Is there a second? Okay, seconded by Ms. Antezo. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion passes eight to zero.
Madam Chairman, resolve that Reese Mitchell of Stratford B. and hereby appointed an alternate member of the Waterfront Harbor Management Commission, replacing David Salick, whose term expired May thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen, and was put on the, was made a full member of the commission at our last council meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes eight to zero. Stratford Housing Authority, is there a motion to table this?
Madam Chair? I would like to reappoint Ken Bishop to the Stratford Housing Authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Can you tell us a little bit about him?
I'm sorry? Was there a discussion?
I just want to know who he is.
Okay. Would you like to tell him?
I can tell you. Kenny Bishop is, has been on the Housing Authority. I don't think he's served a five-year term, he's served out someone else's term. He is the current treasurer for the DTC, he's been, and he's a member of District Ten, and longtime friend. He's, he's been on the Housing Authority. I don't know who he replaced, but it was recent.
Mr. Young?
Tina, have you spoken to Ken? Does he still want to do it?
I would assume so, because he waited a very long time to get onto it. I don't know if he knew that his term was being expired.
Then I can give him a call tomorrow and find out what...
We can wait. If I withdraw it, I just don't want him to be replaced without, you know, I don't think he knew he was being replaced, because it's a five-year term, and he served out someone else's term.
Madam Chairman, that was the reason for tabling it, because we didn't know.
Is there a motion to table?
So moved.
Okay, is there, all in favor of tabling? Say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed?
Not...
Well, we just voted. All opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion passes eight to zero to table.
I opposed it, I didn't...
Oh, you opposed it? I'm sorry, motion passes seven to one.
Thank you.
Okay, Zoning Commission, alternate member?
Madam Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Resolve that Tony Smith of Stratford B. and is hereby appointed an alternate member of the Zoning Commission, taking the position vacated by Mark Giuliano, whose term expires January one, two thousand and seventeen.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, discussion? I just, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes eight to zero.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to comment on the next topic.
We're not there yet.
No, we aren't there yet, quite yet there yet. Is there a motion to move, to amend the agenda, to add a Public Safety Committee electorate member?
Madam Chairman, so moved.
Okay, is there a second?
What? Second.
All in favor of amending the agenda to appoint a Public Safety Committee electorate member?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to place the nomination for replacement of Tom Hariny, who was a member of the Public Safety Committee. I'd like to put the name of Christopher Curci...
Chucci?
Kuch.
Susie.
Susie?
Thank you. As a member of the Public Safety Committee.
Second.
Discussion? I'd like the minutes to identify his title, Lieutenant Christopher Susie of the Berlin Police Department. He's joining, he would like to join our Public Safety Committee and bring some of their best practices to us.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, motion passes eight to zero. Tax Partnership Screening Committee, is there a move to strike that? That shouldn't be on there.
So moved, Madam Chairman.
I was just going to suggest that.
Okay, all in favor of striking?
Aye.
Okay, Conservation Commission, is there a motion to table?
So moved, Madam Chairman.
Second.
Okay, thank you, is there, all in favor?
Aye.
Tabling? Okay, all opposed? Passes eight to zero to table. Public Safety Committee?
I believe the chairman is going to appoint Wally Kadim, on my recommendation, to the Public Safety Committee.
Second?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, do we need to vote on that, or is that just the chairman's appointment?
I think that's just, that's the chair's appointment.
Oh, is it? Okay, you're appointed.
Thank you very much.
See, at the meeting...
Is that revenge?
Public Works, yes, Public Works Committee.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
At the chairman's request, David Harden is being appointed to the Public Works Committee.
Yep, is that good with you? Okay, all in favor? And we, I don't think you, we have to vote on that. Community Development Subcommittee?
Move to strike, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
Okay, very good.
Aye.
Is there, all in favor of striking that?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Right. Hold on.
Wait, wait, wait.
All right, I'll withdraw it.
Did you want some?
I have something to say before we adjourn, is that be okay? Real quick, just want to say, happy about the police chief being promoted and the assistant chief. I just want to just say thank you very much, guys, for keeping it in-house, and wish our former chief, Rittner, good luck in his new role as the chief of Danbury. Thank you, guys, thank you.
So there's a motion to adjourn?
There's a motion to adjourn, second?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.